Yeah, like the call, the committee, the whole meeting for Monday, February 20, 2023 to order roll call, please.
Mayor Grifino, trustee Carol, trustee Curtis, trustee Gately, trustee Lowry, trustee Nedved, trustee Salazar.
Here. Thank you. Audience comments, trustee comments, discussion item one, Steve.
I think item number one is regarding our building permit fees periodically villages look at their building permit fee structure, trying to determine whether or not we're still within comparable ranges, see if anything makes sense to change any additions or deletions to our code. As the board might know, building permits aren't always the easiest thing. Sometimes they're complicated, require more information. Sometimes our fees may be higher than other towns and people wonder why, or vice versa, maybe we're lower. So what our staff did here was they did a comprehensive review of our building permits and tried to put them in a more organized way that we think would be easier to explain to residents and more, you know, justifiable, so to speak, so that they align with an actual amount of time it takes to look at the permit review and whatnot. And then going from here, the Mike and his staff is also looking to kind of revamp the process that we have to walk people through and make it easier for people who are looking to get a permit to understand what information they need to provide us and vice versa, what to expect during the process. With that, Mike is going to give us an overview.
Thank you, Steve. The information that you have in the packet, I gave everyone two worksheets, one residential, one non-residential. That includes the tiered fee approach that we're taking tonight. Also too, I have Morgan Pernardy with us tonight. She's our building permit technician. She has an MPA from NIU, so I definitely put her analytical skills to work. So we can thank her and David Hanson for the elaborate spreadsheet that was provided for tonight's meeting. So with that, we'll get right into it. And the purpose for the building permit revisitation is that we haven't updated revisited the building permit fees since 2007. So it's been quite some time. And what we're looking to do is not just reviews of the fees themselves, but how we structure the fees and how the fees are codified in our code. We want to provide clarity as to what exactly requires a building permit fee. If you go to our website right now, you'll see that we do have sort of an exhaustive list of items that require permit, items that don't require permit. So through this process itself, we're looking to create a codified comprehensive list of all the improvements that require building permit. And that would be put into the village code. So you can go search for on the website and we would have subsequent handouts available to the public. So that way the information's out there and it just alleviates a lot of questions that we might get and just general information to the public. What we're looking to do is do primarily flat rate fees. And we're looking to a tier approach to do so. We find this process to be a little more simple and transparent. Most of the fees right now are based upon cost or the area of the work involved with the improvement. So as an example of an area based permit, this is for new residential construction. It says $31 per 100 square feet, and then we have a minimum of $124, or where that comes down to is 31 cents a square foot. You know, so we're in to do that information, we now we have to have a lot more information that comes in with each building permit. We have to have an area calculation. So they had to provide that calculation. We have to verify that calculation. With cost base fees, this is the structure here in front of us. Anything less than $500 is $31. Between 500 and $1,000, it's $49. Greater than $1,000 is $49 plus $16 of subsequent improvement costs. So again, these are the fees that we're kind of dealing with right now. We do have some flat rate fees and we'll go through this tonight, but this is kind of what we've been dealing with. So not isn't it more cumbersome for our staff, but you know, if it is a little bit more tricky for the general public to understand what their fees are, they can't just come in the came into office and say, well, this is, this is, this is what your fee is going to be. You have to provide us with this information, this information, and when it's time to issue your permit, then we'll tell you what your permit costs. We're looking to get away from that. So we used about four and a half years of data, June 2017 through December 2021. We did remove some of the roofing and siding permits from fiscal year 18 to 19 because that was a major storm event. So it's kind of an outlier with respect to the data. I think I made this term up, but what we're looking to do is go to a transactional unit base for the methodology behind how we actually quantify these permits. So again, we're looking to establish the fees based upon the costs incurred in the village. And I have a little breakdown here, you know, for example, for a tier one residential permit, it's going to be $75. So that breakdown is a $50 inspection fee, which means it has one inspection and then an admin or review fee of $25. So that $25 would go to our, our time handling the permit and our time reviewing the permit. Now, when you get into some of the higher tier fees, you're getting, you're adding administrative fees, inspection fees, internal plan review fees, and also plumbing inspection fees. So some of those higher fees that we'll get into, it's those are, those are how those are broken down till we get to those numbers. So we didn't just try and pull numbers out of the air. We did the best that we could to come up with a number that made sense based upon the cost of the village to do the actual permit review work. And we also did to look at surrounding communities, just to make sure that we weren't off our basis when it comes to actually reviewing our building permit fees and moving forward. Another goal, it wasn't the main priority of this, but what we wanted to do was balance everything out. We wanted to make sure that if we were going to take a cut somewhere, that we would make up for it in a permit fee elsewhere. So this next slide here is the example, and this will be at the end of the presentation as well, but it shows that based upon the data set that we'd had, that we might be a loss about $13,000 on the residential permits. And again, that's only based upon that sample set that we had at four and a half years. Those vary from year to year. They could, they could vary quite drastically, but in our sample set, this is where those numbers came from. And we, we anticipated incurring about $20,000 more on the commercial side. So we're, we're trying to again, balance everything out. So we're not taking a loss on a building permit fee program. If you look at the worksheets I provided, and not every slide is going to be like this to Steve's direction. I needed to cut this down because this is too much here to see. But what I want to do is explain some of the methodology. You know, the first column in every, in the worksheet, just is the actual building, building improvement. So that way, again, driveway fence, pretty self-explanatory. You can go in there, you can see, okay, I'm doing a fence. I know that this requires a permit. Next column is our current building permit fee. If you look at it, if there's a number in there, that means it's a fixed cost or a flat rate. If you see cost base, it goes back to the formula provided before. And if it's area based, the, also the formula provided earlier. In this case, this is the example of tier one, you can see that we use inspections as a basis for the quantitative information. So with, under these permit types, you're going to get required by one building inspection. We also to look at the municipal comparables to see where we're at in the comparable set, that would be the column of their average permit fees for other municipal comparables. And again, the next column, which is under the village's average permit fee cost, that's what the average permit fee is going to cost the consumer under each category. And the average quantity is meaning how many, how many of those permit types that we issue a year on average? The, the revenue that those bring in on average, the proposed fee, the most important being obviously these are showing that the $75 is a flat rate fee, the revenue derived from the new fee and the difference in the last column, and then kind of adding everything up to what that program might look like in total. Now I'll go through each of these just kind of briefly. So I don't want to get hung up on all this because I'm going to, but I just wanted to show you how we got to these numbers. That's kind of important part of that.
Question. So I, you know, over the years I've done improvements to my house. I did a new front door windows. And whenever I would call and say, you know, the work has been completed, if somebody could have come out and inspect, there was never an inspection done. So what I would like to see is for things that we're not physically coming out to inspect the work, why are we charging a permitting fee? I thought the purpose of a permit was to make sure that the work is being done in, you know, in a good manner.
Yeah. So if we, if you call for a permit or for inspections, because we, that's how it works. We don't know when the work is actually done. So we rely on the applicant to call us. We'll come by and, and, and do the actual application, the inspection itself. And if you don't really hear anything from us, that means you pass the inspection.
But are the inspections actually being done? Yeah. How do you check a window without coming on the inside of the house? How do you check a front door without, how do you check framing without coming on into the interior?
Typically like for, for doors, maybe it's looking for tempered glass, things like that. We have the specs that were provided. A lot of times with the, and I'm going to get into that specifically in this very next slide is.
I, I just want to make sure that we're not charging permitting fees for things that are being, you know, followed up on.
Yeah, I agree.
You can look at a door and know when, if it's complete from the outside. So, because you know, it's a structure, it's part of a building. You can see if an inspector can tell if it's done proper, just by on the outside view of a door. Pretty much the same with a window, they can look at the.
You say that inspection can be done from the, like, you think they're walking up to the door or they're just driving by?
No, no, they come up to the door and they can tell if this door is done properly.
I would say that is also like part of the, on the next slide with the tiers, we, we consider, we took into consideration what happens at an inspection and how much time of an inspection, how much time the inspector spends at the inspection in regards to our permit fees.
Thank you. Yeah. So this is the tier one. We'll spend a little more time on this than the other ones, but you know, the driveway is a $35 fee. Obviously, we're looking to move this into a category where everything is brought in under one permit fee. So tier one is a $75. This is for residential. As I mentioned on the previous slide, that these, the tier one requires one building inspection. The, I meant to say roofing, siding and roofing, siding and windows, not roofing, setting and doors. This was the sticky point because those were all cost based permits. Doors were included. However, there, we see the most quantity of these permit types and they can tend to be very expensive. You know, if someone comes in and they do $40,000 with the windows, which was does happen, their permit, permit fee might cost $500. So what we did was we did include this with the tier one for $75. So a lot of the revenue lost in that, in the last column, it kind of reflects that. It kind of reflects the fact that, you know, we're going to be basically taking a little bit of a hit on this, but it's going to be reduced cost to our residents. And I will say, in the years that I've been here, those we receive the most complaints about are roofing, siding and windows, because it's not, it's not an extensive inspection, you know, they'll, they'll do a drive around, making sure the, there's flashing, making sure the site's clear, but it's, it's not as an intense of an actual inspection. And to your point, Laura, too, we actually took out residential doors as an actual permit type, just for that reason, because we can get that information upfront. You know, if it's a door, if it's a window, we get the U factors. If it's siding, we'll get a lot of the information in the contract. If it's, if it's roofing, we just make sure there's ice and water shield. So a lot of that stuff is baked into the contract. So we can verify that upfront and do that essentially over the counter and then just do a brief inspection. So moving to a $75 permit kind of reflects what Morgan had said is that it's, it's a lower timeframe for an inspection. It's, it's, it's not as time consuming on our staff as some of the other inspections might be. That's why we figured it'd be best in tier one, but that in itself is, you would see in a storm event could be a major revenue loss to the village. So, but we didn't want to count on that. We didn't want to count on that revenue is if it was this kind of, we taught the conversations about water rates. You don't want to count on the outliers for your actual revenue, more or less keeping a steady stream, which we can continue to monitor as we, as we move through these different tiers.
So I have a question too. So when like our inspectors on vacation are sick and you hire outside company, will this still cover that cost for that?
Yeah, because they, they charge us an hourly rate. We believe it would cover these inspections. Cause we don't see these inspections being very intensive with respect to time.
It's good, buddy.
You have, you have all the information there. So I'm just going to kind of breeze through the different tiers and kind of hitting some of the high points. Again, tier two residential, 175, as you'll see here, there are a lot of cost based permits and some area based permits sprinkled in. The, obviously the column here in blue shows what the average permit fee is. So the range between, you know, you have between $284 down to 52. We figured a good average and based upon the work applied to this, that a good, a good flat free rate for this category would be $175. This typically has, and you'll see on the worksheet, mostly about three building inspections involved, but to, you know, on the lower end, two. So it's a two to three inspection requirement, which if you did three building inspections, you're looking at $150 with a $25 admin fee, review fees, that would bring you to 175.
I have a question going back to this. So a patio is $75 and a deck is $175. What's the justification for that?
Uh, this is different inspections. I believe there's, there's more, there's a lot more review that goes into a deck. If you're doing a wood framed deck, there are calculations for load bearing, things like that, how it's secured to the house.
But a patio often costs three times as much as the deck.
But a patio, you're mostly just looking at like, you're verifying the location, doing like a pre-pore, making that your sub-bases there. And you're basically, I think it's just.
A patio would be either a pre-pore inspection, if you're doing concrete or a vinyl for pavers. So they're just a huge jump for something that one inspection relatively often.
Yeah. And it doesn't require, it is a lot more labor intensive for a deck review and an actual inspection. So.
A deck is something that people are repairing, replacing, let's say every, you know, 10 years versus the patio. It's got a lot longer lifespan to it. I just think that's one that we need to take another look at. $175 for a deck.
Yeah. But you come out and like, look at the holes. There's a lot more, you know, the foundation of it.
Postal inspections. Yeah, it's, it's.
Postal inspection, a framing inspection, and then the final.
Right. So three. Yeah.
It's just considered more structural as opposed to something that's sitting on the.
How it's secured to the house.
On the ground.
Yeah, it is. It is a lot more involved. Even on the review side, there's a lot more load calculations that go into the actual review itself. It's a lot more review upfront than it would be just for someone doing a patio or a paper patio or a concrete or an asphalt patio.
I can see that would be a lot more work.
Which is important because like a lot of the, the wood patios are, you know, can't leave it off the house as a walkout basement. I mean, you have a lot of structure to consider versus just a concrete slab that you come out looking at.
It is, it is, yeah, it is a lot more of a labor intensive review and inspection process.
Well, and you're only coming out one time for a concrete slab, right? Like just the pre-pore.
Yeah, they're very of a location, sub-bases, all there. Yep. This next group, two tier three residential is $225. For in-ground pools, it's typically about three building inspections, solar panels, two building inspections. The fees are a little bit higher in the solar panels. They've actually gone up since this review. We're, we're finding that now that people can have more solar panels in their home, that it's the actual permits are costing a lot more. But what we didn't want to do, we wanted to promote the technology by having a lower fee attached to it. We wouldn't make it so expensive. So we're deterring people from putting solar panels on their homes. It might, it might so that we have 15 of this category, but we've had actually kind of quite a swell of solar panel permits as of lately. So there's incentive programs out there. Now we allow them on every roof plane. So we've seen a lot more of them. There's a lot of pent up demand in North Aurora. And these are highly intense, these are highly intensive. Plan reviews as well, you know, you're looking at bonding for pools. There's a lot more that goes into them because you have gas, electric, the same with the solar panels. So there is, it's a far more intense review process as well, which, which is why we bumped that up to the tier three review process and tier free, permit free.
Is there any reason why we couldn't bump it up to 250 just to break even on them?
Yeah, again, we applied that, but using whole numbers is probably always a little, it is ideal again, because when you're conveying the information, like I showed in that first slide with the, and you saw in here is that the fees were just all over the place. We had a, a fence was 36, I mean, a patio was 35, 49 for a drive, and it could be a little off, but every fee was just a little bit different. And I, and I don't know why.
So this is just like an average, you figured.
Yeah. I mean, so we could, we could look to do tier three at 250 because again, these, this tier three, there are a lot of inspections and a quite intensive building permit review. So we could look to do that.
I mean, I think it makes, $25 is not going to prevent somebody from getting solar panels. I, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't think 25. How much are solar panels? Thousands and thousands of dollars?
It's usually a lean at your house anyway.
Well, I like the idea of lowering that for, to get, you know, clean energy and solar panels. I think that's great. But again, I don't think $25 is going to make or break it either way.
Thank you.
But in terms of them wanting to do one.
Yeah, we're looking at, Morgan just had just mentioned that. So if you look at 372 for the average permit fee, I think you, they're, they've now gone up to over $400. 444, I think it was.
Yeah, it'd be 425 before plan review fees were calculated on top of that. So it'd be about $500 permits for the 34 solar permits we've done this fiscal year so far.
So it's less than half of what it was.
Yeah. So 250 is not really, that's, that's not out of the ballpark. We think we can, we can adjust that.
They range from about $200 a permit to $1,200 a permit.
How many trips for the inspection? I mean, how many times out?
For solar, it's in a roomway, two.
Two.
Tier four residential, this is $350. These are where you're starting to get into more of the more, let's say bulk of the residential construction with attached garages, detached garages, three season rooms, additions. This, these are, these are a little bit more of a, these are heavier on the plan review. Typically, these will require at least a minimum of five building inspections. So based upon our average fee, we looked at and bumping that one up to 350. Again, given the fact that we do spend a lot of time reviewing these and they are quite intensive on the building permit inspection side. So they, they go anywhere from between, I think, five and 11 inspections. So we felt that $350 was a good average for the tier four permit fees.
Mike, with these changes, where are we going to fall in terms of the surrounding municipalities, just generally speaking?
We, you know, we did some outreach. We're finding that we are, I've seen some higher and lower. We didn't spend a lot of time doing the calculations on the comparables, but having looked them in the past, they're kind of all over the place. You have some communities that have really high residential fees, you know, Sugar Grove, I think they basically everything costs, you know, a hundred hours or more. But you know, Batavia might cost, but we might be between some of our comparable sets between Batavia and Sugar Grove. But some of these communities might not have looked at the building permit fees in quite some time either. So we're looking to kind of set the tone for the future. And hopefully this will take us out into the future and not having to continue to review these fees.
As I'm looking at these fees, like these two, the $500 fees, to me, it seems exorbitant. I mean, this is somebody's private property. They're making, you know, we're assuming that they're using contractors or doing, you know, highly skilled people are doing the work. To me, this is just an extravagant tax and the taxpayer has no recourse. Yeah, they're paying 500 for the permit. And if the contractor does a crappy job and you discover that, I mean, we're not going to go after the village, we're going to go after the contractor. But I just, I just don't see how, you know, we're doing the public a service by charging them $500 to allow them to do something that they have every day to do to their own home. So I'd like to see these come down a little bit. I, I don't like some of the jumps, especially in the deck. I mean, things that we're seeing, what would be the most common building permits? I would assume a deck would be one of the most common, but to double it, I don't, I don't see that as anything other than an unnecessary tax on allowing somebody to improve their home, which therefore improves the, the value, improves the neighborhood. So I, I'd like to see some of these come down a little bit.
Mike, do you have the actual cost like this tier five? You said up to 11 trips? I mean, what would that be? I mean, we don't want to lose money on these things, right? After review and inspections and on and on and on.
Yeah, because we, we, I'll go ahead, Morgan.
I would guess for the tier five, one of the big things that adds cost is that includes plumbing inspections, which are plumbing inspections are, we charge $75 per plumbing inspection right now to cover the cost of the inspector going out there.
And those are outsourced, so we're paying for that service.
Is that an in-house inspector or someone you have to hire outside?
We hire out.
Okay. So you have to pay for their time, right? And yeah, I don't know. I take a little bit of a different view of that is that you want to make sure that they're staying up to code. It's for, for health reasons and health reasons of those around you as well. I mean, I think, I don't know. I don't know if it should be lowered or not, but I certainly can see how if you have to hire somebody from the outside, you have to pay for their time. That's a direct cost to the village. So.
Yeah. And again, a lot of it comes back to the tier one fees. I mean, those were the ones that we've received a lot of phone calls on. I mean, people, like I said, have come in and we've had window permits that have cost $500, which is one inspection. And it's basically the only thing we're verifying is a U factor. So we tried to hit the ones that were broadly applied to the community and that in our time here, we've experienced the most complaints about typically with these larger projects, you know, you're looking at percentage of the cost of the work. So it might be $500 for the building permit, but they might be spending $40,000 on the actual job itself. So what are the percentage comes falls in around one or 2%, whatever it might be, it is relatively small in comparison to the actual cost of the work that they're, that they're conducting on their homes.
Yeah. Well, the, the thing is though, we're, we're providing a public service by inspecting for health and safety. And we shouldn't lose, like to Mayor Grifino, we shouldn't lose money if we're doing it. I agree that if we're not inspecting, then we shouldn't pay for an expecting, but it sounds like we're at least inspecting everything once. And on a basement remodel with plumbing, five, I don't think $500 is, or remodel with plumbing. I don't think that's an exorbitant fee. I mean, we do zoning laws all the time that prevent people from using their property the way they want to use it. So I think the other thing is this gives buyers of houses that may have not been involved in the permitting process or the remodel, some assurance that they've been done under the code that is been inspected and, and it's been done in a safe and healthy way.
Right. Cause I think they do pull permits, don't they? F O I, people looking at houses to see what's been done and what's been approved. So.
Yeah, we get a lot of last minute closes that someone put in a basement and they have to close tomorrow. So.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
Carol's point.
I think that's a really important point though, right? Because when you resell the house, if you're buying the house, you want to have some assurance that it was put in properly, right?
And it can mess up a closing.
Right. And that it was done correctly. Yeah.
I think when we were going through this and Mike and his staff did a good job of trying to balance, we, we never want to hammer the residents on fees. So if you look at this, you haven't raised your fees since 2007, basically. And the net revenue on residential permits is set to decrease, which means that overall, based on the actual data of who's pulling permits, we're actually going to lose residential revenue on this because we are scaling back a little bit. The trustee Curtis's point, tier one is the most common tier. So that's why, if you go back, it's the deck permits. If you're looking at them, there's over 20 a year, but in tier one, there are, there are a lot of ones here, like driveways, 96 a year, fences, 119 fences a year, 59 patios a year. I mean, there's a lot here, 98 roofs a year. So that's tier one is where the majority of residents have their permits and those are the $75 based ones.
Can I ask one more question? Mike, a few years ago, when we had that hailstorm and we had that big revenue boost from siding and roofs, it looks to me like under the tier one, if, if something like that were to happen again, it looks like we would be okay. We'd make money on roofs, wouldn't we? Or would we, if something like that happened, would we lose money? Like a, a lot of money, wouldn't we?
Well, we would lose money in the sense that if you compare it to the, the previous fee, we wouldn't lose money in the sense that the cost that we incur by doing the, the, the quick review in, in-house and then the, the one inspection, we wouldn't lose money as a village, but we would just be, you know, basically foregoing the, the revenue that we'd be the difference between $75 and whatever that cost base fee would have been. That's, that's the revenue that would have been lost.
And the trustee Carol, to your point, if you look at that right there and you look at hailstorms, you think roofs and siding. And you look at those fees going from 200 plus dollars to $75, you're right. Those anomalies, when they happen once every five to 10 years, the village will lose that windfall of revenue that comes in from those permit fees, but overall residents are benefiting from an average lower.
So overall, permit fees are lower through this plan.
Yes, they, they would drop significantly on those two.
I didn't put it, I didn't put in the report too, but if you remember, we did do away with the contractor registration. So if someone came in and they were doing any of these permits, you had $150 tacked on to everything. So by, by getting rid of that, that automatically took that off the table for the consumer or the resident itself. So we did that a while ago. We didn't see the value in it, but that also reduced the cost, cost quite drastically. If, if you're getting a fence and it's $36, but you're tacking on $150 fee on top of that.
I just remember we used that money. I think we paid it into the police pension fund when it came in. It was a windfall for like two years.
Were you in the hailstorm?
Yeah, it was like 500,000, I think, or something.
We've had surplus. I want to say that going back a while, that might've even been used for Emerald Ashport too. Uh, cause we removed like a thousand trees at one time, 900 trees, I think.
Moving on to the last residential category is tier six. And you know, again, this, this goes back to the fact that we wanted to be neutral with the, the average, the current fees and the new permit fees. So if you noticed all the, with the exception of fire restoration, we're looking at keeping all of those costs the same. So, you know, for multifamily, single family hometown homes, it's all going to be 30, 31 cents of a square foot. So we wouldn't make any changes on those. Those are the higher, oh, higher volume or higher cost permits in this category. So we just kept the, the prices the same. Given the size of the projects on the homes, it can be quite substantial, but again, we're looking at about 15 buildings inspections for a single family. it can be quite substantial, but again, we're looking at about 15 buildings, uh, inspections for a single family home. So it is, it is quite cumbersome. Um, so, but again, so we're not yowling. I mean, we did keep those actually the same. Getting into the non-residential, this would cover anything that's not residential. So your industrial, commercial. Again, looking at some variable flat rate fees, um, you know, $36 for a fence, $35 for patio. They're similar to residential, um, but given the, the size and the, the fact that these are now entities that are obtaining these permits and there's a whole nother volumes of scale, the work itself. Uh, we did look to move it to a tier one, $250 permit for this category here. This is stuff that we don't get a lot of, as you can see in the permit quantity in that fourth column there. Uh, but we were looking at an increase and one thing I wanted to mention too, was the cost base for parking lots. Now $250 for a parking lot is actually quite, quite generous because we see parking lots that might cost, you know, 40, $50,000. Uh, whether it be a grind overlay or just, you know, doing any sort of crack filling, things like that. Uh, we wanted to keep this cost low because we do see a lot of these come in for small businesses. Um, they're not a labor intensive review. They're not an intensive inspection process. So we brought that one substantially down because we actually had that in one of the higher tiers in the non-residential category. Uh, but that being the highest quantity in this, in this set, we did bring that one down because I, I felt that that was a little, little high uh, for small businesses and you're trying to promote people to do work. We want people to get permits. Uh, but we want people at the same point in time to do those improvements. It's just an aesthetic improvement for the village itself. So we want to penalize them with a high fee, uh, based upon the cost being that if they get a, if they get a high quote, they're paying more. That's why we're bringing it down to a, a flat rate fee.
Hey Mike, I, I, I share your concern. We don't want to be picking on our small businesses in the village either. I mean, some of these, I, I understand doing, going out and doing an inspection on a 10,000 square foot, 20,000 square foot building. But what about some of these small businesses? You know, down route 31 and, and down Randall Road to take some fees for something like, you know, putting in a new patio or fence or something like that. I mean, to, to jack it up almost, you know, triple the, the cost. I, I, I don't see how that's going to promote these small businesses to actually want to do the improvement.
Yeah, it's something we could look at, you know, if there's a hybrid system of including, you know, for certain improvements, looking at doing a hybrid of, 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 of flat, basically for any, whether it be non-residential, residential, maybe applying a flat fee for those as well and doing sort of a hybrid. Uh, we could look at doing something like that. If that, I understand what you're saying. You know, a, a patio and a business for $250. Um, again, it's, it goes back to more scale and size. Um, they might have more linear, you know, linear feed that is a, a far, a far higher cost. Um, but that's something we go into as well.
And I noticed you have exterior doors for commercial. Is there a difference between an exterior commercial door versus a residential?
Uh, it, it just depends on the application.
Cause if nobody's going out to inspect that, I don't, I don't think we should be charging a fee for that also.
For commercial doors, there's more like fire restrictions and stuff that you gotta look for if it's an exterior door for inspections and review time.
It's totally a different door.
Isn't that handled by the fire department? Checking exterior fire door and things like that?
Well, the door to purchase a door in the code, it's got to be a fire door. It's got to be fire rated to be installed, you know, it's part of, part of our code or building code for a commercial building. They all have that. There's a fire rating right on the.
They're not coming out to check on the installation. I don't think there should be a fee charged.
I don't know. I think they do check on.
Don't they come out once? Didn't you say they come out once?
There would be, there'd be a, at least a final inspection on that.
So all these inspections, there's at least one, right?
Yeah. So yeah, if you look at the worksheet, um, it kind of, it, we do the best job we can to sort of quantify the inspections required for each line item. So for exterior door, you have one inspection.
I, I'm fine with the having higher fees for commercial. I mean, I, I don't want to punish our businesses, but the whole point is the more businesses we have, the, the lower we can keep our fees and taxes for our residents. That's the whole point of it. And so I'm, I'm all favor.
We don't get a lot of, uh, pushback from the business community. It's part of their, it's part of their, you know, their actual budgets and everything else. So we don't, we don't get a lot of pushback on the actual, uh, cost. I mean, getting pushbacks and requiring permits, that, that happens all the time, residential, non-residential. But, um, with respect to non-residential, uh, permit fees, we don't really get a lot of pushback.
I think usually that'd be wrapped up into their financing. They would just include it if it was a finance project unless they were paying out of their pocket, but, and they have, they're more apt to get a return on their investment. A residential homeowner doesn't get a return. They, they're adding until they sell the house. So.
And if you look at the, the permits, the number of permits, I go back to what Mike said, you know, you only have one commercial fence permit in that time listed here. The amount of storefronts that are going to have something like a, a fence are probably minimal. But when you're talking maybe an industrial development that has, as, as Mike said, the, the linear feet of fence that they're doing is going to be more substantial than a homeowner's fence would be.
Seems like the homeowners eat up most of the permit, permits through, you know, your graph chart. Right? I mean, I do see in a comparable, it's like 90, 10.
Yeah. You know, what's nice is the fact that construct, the, the cost of jobs are going up based upon materials. So if you're, they're still on a, a cost base fee. You're, you're only getting, you're only getting higher as you move forward in, in life with the, with the cost of lumber, concrete, things like that. So these fees do go up even if we don't change them because based upon the cost of the job. You know, it's hard enough to find a contractor right now. So you might have to pay more just to have someone available at your house. So, um, what this does, it's a more of a, it's more of a static fee where it takes out all the, all the other variables, variables that might be associated with doing improvement work. And this is that fee and this is that fee moving forward. There's no, there's nothing else that's going to impact that fee. Um, so.
He's pretty competitive then. Up and down the river for the commercial side or?
Yeah, the, the commercial ones are all over the place. Um, but there we are, we've, I've not seen anything that was, is out of the, out of the, out of the norm.
Well, I like the fact that this is so much simpler than it was before. It does make it easy to figure out what it is you're going to pay. It's a flat fee. I think that's easy to understand for anybody looking at it. I like the fact that the, the homeowners, the residential piece is much lower. So, um, and I, and I agree with trustee Carol. I, I don't think that the $250 is, I mean, it's baked into their price, right? To do the parking lot or to do the, the plumbing or whatever. I mean, I, I think it's a, a much better overall way to go about getting the permit fees than it was.
The flat rate fee is, is going to be appreciated because again, they know walking in the door, what they're going to pay. There's no question about it. Um, some of the larger permits might have a review aspect, whether it be engineering, set engineering or, um, third party and, um, cost, but those are for the larger projects and they're just on a whole different scale. But I think that people appreciate the fact that they know exactly what they're going to spend on a permit. So if they're hiring a contractor, they can look on a fees and say, well, wait a minute, why did our building, why did this contractor charge us this for their, for the permit line item? When the village is only charging $75 for this. So again, it's simple, it's transparent. It's all going to be codified and right there in the code.
Hey Mike, where does, uh, where does a basement finish fall in here? I don't see that broken out unless I'm missing it.
The remodel with plumbing?
Uh, but it would be the, yeah, like the remodel either with or without.
Yeah. So probably a tier four, uh, with, without plumbing or tier five with plumbing.
Do you have any idea how often or how many people don't get permits that you catch? I mean, any idea?
I mean, we, we do catch some and we do, a lot of times, um, we've had some, this phenomenon where people are, are looking to close on their home and they have to check the box where they now got all the permits and they, they have an oh moment, realizing they didn't get a permit for their basement. And then we're doing them after the fact. Um, but yeah, we, we do catch them.
So how's that work after the fact? So.
We do the best we can to do an inspection and then we have to just sort of, uh, uh, put the information in a building permit file that uh, whether we can get into the walls or not, we have to be detailed with the inspection that we were able to conduct. And then it does happen.
Do they then pay the fee?
We, what we do is that we're able in our, the code allows us to tack on a hundred percent of the building permit fee cost. So, um, if, if it's after the fact, they didn't get a permit, let's just say the permit was $400, we can charge them $800 for the permit. So we can, we can, we could, yeah, there, there have been times where it's been, if it's been blatant, when we, 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 we're not out to get anyone, um, you know, sometimes these will miscommunications, but um, if, if someone's blatant, yeah, we, we will, we will charge the double the fees.
And one of the places that I, I want us to keep working to get better at is when you need that permit and when you don't need to permit, because I can tell you right now, the word remodel means a whole lot of different things to people. And so some people think remodel just means like, oh, I'm changing out of vanity. That's cosmetic in some cases. So like, we don't typically charge permits for a lot of cosmetic things. So a remodel would be, we talk about it's actually changing the structure or changing the plumbing or actually adding electric work and.
Yeah, typically it's, it's mechanical, it's electrical, plumbing, structural. Those are, those are the big, um, items that, you know, you can assume if you're doing any work in those categories, you're going to require a building permit. But again.
Is that defined?
Well, we're, it's, we, we would do is probably because we're modeling here is going to be included in the actual, as a line item. What we would still probably do in the code itself, and what we have in our website too, is we have items that don't require permit. You know, cutting painting, uh, carpeting, flooring, cabinets, things like that. We'll still continue to put that information out there. What's that?
Hot water tank.
Yeah. No hot water heaters either. Mm-hmm. So we try to do the best we can to get the information out there and keep it. So there's no confusion or, and it just helps us work smoothly and, and, uh, move forward with the permits. Uh, tier two for non-residential, we're about $500. You see these, these actual fees can drastically range. Um, you know, from electric alterations to elevators, which we don't really have many of. We're looking to do an average of a $500 fee. Now with this one, what we had done was we broke out, um, anything less than two acres. And you'll see that in here. I think you'll see it in, um, the, it was in the previous slide as well, the forthcoming slide, but anything that's less than two acres, you can imagine, well, you know, what's in our orchard commerce development, orchard commons development, all the commerce, all the randals and orchard developments we have out there. Um, typically those smaller businesses are on lots that are two acres or less. So what we want to do is charge a smaller fee for, to these smaller businesses, um, for those permit types. And again, as we move through these, we're getting to, to more advanced, um, actual costs or more reviews. Um, roofing under tier three, non-residential, uh, the, you know, average fee of this, we've had six, has been around a thousand dollars. I've seen roofing permit fees, um, go up to about $5,000 or $6,000. So they can get very high. Again, we're trying to bring that cost down. So, uh, people can afford to do routine maintenance on their building, not, not looking to gouge, but just to kind of have a, a fee that um, is sort of in tune with what these actual fees could be and have been. Um, and how we want to take them into the future. So we can revisit this, you know, further down the road. Signage, most signage, whether it be a new freestanding sign, a wall sign, a tena panel sign. Um, we're, we're at $4 a square foot. We would just be looking to round up to go to $5 a square foot, uh, for tier four for signage. And anytime we've gone through these, these programs as well, if there's anything that we've heard any complaints about, whether it be myself, my staff, we did our best to integrate that into this, into this project. So if we heard complaints, we would make sure that we, we took note of that and we included it in here. Um, cause again, we're, we're looking to be with fair with everyone, not just on residential, but also on the non-residential side as well. Um, on the permit types for, um, new buildings, uh, for non-residential, one of the big ones would be to move, uh, from the 30 cents a square foot to 35 cents a square foot, uh, for these fees. And we found some communities are, are on $30 or 30 cents a square foot. Some were at 33 cents a square foot. Uh, we just found 35 cents a square foot to be a good, uh, whole number itself. Um, this is something we've not had a lot of pushback on. So we just want to take advantage of that again, as, as costs are, are increasing for us to provide inspections and everyone else, um, you're doing plan reviews and everything, everything involved in that process. Separate site plan review is required for these items, you know, typically we might have, do it in-house or have a third party do the review fee. Um, and one thing that we did too, was the cost base fee. We'd be looking to move that to $50 under 1,000. I think it was 49 before. And now we're looking to move it, uh, for $20 for every thousand of improvements. Again, these can be very, very high, uh, cost, uh, permits. Um, we do not have a lot of pushback on them because they're typically brought in, uh, given the cost of the job. Um, whether it be a building addition to Hyundai, um, a new warehouse building, um, all of the larger businesses and institutional guys, they understand what the cost of these, um, light items and improvements are for, uh, permit perspective. And again, just kind of showing each, I went through each tier, just kind of showing how we, we did the best we could to sort of balance everything out. We didn't want to put the village at a loss. Um, as Jason noted in one of his previous, um, budget hearing slides that, you know, we, we budgeted, I think $300,000 a year, uh, for billing permits. And we've far exceeded that past several years. We've just experienced a, um, and as you all know, you approve the projects that come in, um, a swell in development. And it's still continuing to move, uh, as we, as we go on. I don't see it slowing down. So one of the things we just want to make sure that the bill, the, the board is comfortable with the methodology of this, you know, go into a tier system, go into flat rate permits. Um, again, we might see some losses in some of the categories, but we might be balancing out with, um, some smaller upticks in the flat rate fees themselves. So um, any further questions, we'd appreciate it. If, if everyone's okay with this, we'd probably move it back maybe to a either draft ordinance or final ordinance, um, as we've been working on this for quite some time, uh, to get it to this point.
I'm good. Dad?
Yeah, I, I, I think making it simpler is much easier. I, I like it a lot.
I'm good.
I, I don't see any difference.
Yeah, I'll take a debit to look at that.
Anybody else on that or? Patio deck. So.
I can understand why a deck is more because as Mike said, there's, there's a structural component to a deck where there's not a structural component to a patio and that's why the permit fee is more. So I'm okay with it being more. And I'm also, while I'm talking, I'm okay with.
Yeah. The difference being if you look at it, so the difference between tier one and tier two is a hundred hours that instead, that takes in consideration the two additional building inspections that we, um, we use as a unit basis for the difference between tier one and tier two.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm okay with everything. Um, just to recap then, so trustee Carol mentioned 225 to 250. I don't know, was that tier like two or? I don't know, on the residential side. Two, three residential to 250.
Everybody okay with that or? Or leave it at two and a quarter? Leave it at two and a quarter or? 250 or? I, I don't care.
Yeah, I don't.
It's not going to bother me either way.
I think it would help just to make it break even.
Yeah. And I do, I, I do appreciate the whole numbers because again, it's just, it's a number that sticks in someone's head. It's easy to convey. So.
I think, I, I just don't think $25 here or there. I think 250 is fine. I, I don't have any objection to that.
Well, if anything, it sounded like the permits that are driving that fee are typically more than that already. So they're coming down either way. The ones in that category for solar at least.
And then what I hear is on the, the deck construction permit fee, just leave it as you have written.
You know, when I, when I first saw this packet come out, that was the one thing that did stick out to me was the deck. Um, so I, I could, I can agree what Laura's saying as well. Um, the thing that I'm concerned with some of these, most of them are fine is I don't want to discourage people from getting a permit, um, especially something like a deck that can be, um, you know, something structural like that. So, um, I would be, I'd be in favor of moving that to a tier one as well.
Yeah. I think the, so the most that we catch are roofing, siding, windows, driveways. Those are typically the permits that people try and do. Um, they can probably get it done in a day, get it done without the village doing the weekend. Um, that's why we did bring that cost down because again, if I'm, I'm resident two, if I went in and I said, wow, I gotta, I have to pay, you know, $500 for this roofing permit. I'm just going to have, you know, have the guys do it on the weekend. I, I, I'm not saying it's, it's, I understand it, but I could see how it would deter people from getting that permit. So that's why we definitely put it into tier one.
Well, how many inspectors are on the deck? Going back to that again.
Three.
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 Well, we can't lose money as our village, you know?
I mean, are we, are we losing money?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, if you look at, if you look at it from a big picture perspective, you might not be losing money.
We're not losing money. We're not paying somebody else to do it, right? It's our own guy that's on sale.
Well, there is still a cost associated with Mr. Zable, whoever goes out and inspects it. So. Yeah. Every other one in tier one has one inspection except for the fireplace.
Right.
Right. So this has three. Right.
So the village, the village end up absorbing that cost. That's what that means.
My vote would be to kick it to a tier one. So.
Yeah, because we can make up for the cost in other areas. Yeah, because we can make up for the cost in other areas. I mean, it's, it's, again, we just, we just needed a basis. We didn't want to just start pulling numbers. We didn't want to use other municipalities, you know. We just wanted to find out, use an actual, you know, scientific method here to get. Just trying to get a consensus, either we do it or we don't.
I'm fine. Putting it at tier one. I, I don't think it matters one way.
It's one of the more popular, obviously one of the more popular things that we get. So I think you might upset more people.
So what is it? What is the cost difference from where is it now? What is it being proposed to move to?
So I think for the.
Current fee is sixty-nine dollars. So it would go to one seventy-five.
So you're saying moving it from one seventy-five to thirty-five? Is that what's being proposed?
For a deck.
Seventy-five.
A deck would go from sixty-nine to one seventy-five.
That, that, yeah, it's more than doubling.
But if you move it to the, to the lower tier, it will then go to seventy-five. So it's a hundred dollars less than you have proposed at the moment.
Yep.
Okay.
And a few dollars more than it currently is. Yeah, we can move it to tier one.
And make sure you move the other one to two fifty to make up for the.
You can move everything around eventually. All right. So tier one for the deck. Okay. All right, is that it? Thank you. Yep. Item two, Steve.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is, uh, Flock Safety Camera Discussion. Uh, you may have seen these, uh, in the news or being discussed in other municipalities. Uh, they've become quite popular. Uh, several municipalities in Chicagoland area already use them. Uh, there are several more in this area that are looking to use them, uh, currently. So Deputy Chief Gorski is going to uh, walk us through, uh, what the village is thinking as far as, uh, potentially adding some flock cameras into our community. Um, and there's also somebody here representative from, uh, the Flock Safety Company, uh, camera company that can answer further questions. With that, Joe, would you like to walk us through this?
Yes, thank you, Steve. Um, so our proposal is that we're looking to purchase six of these flock safety cameras. Um, we're looking to place these cameras in strategic high-traffic locations within the village boundaries. The purchase and deployment of the cameras is needed in identifying and apprehending the criminal elements that visit North Aurora to engage in criminal behavior throughout our town. Um, the mission, the current mission of our police department is to protect the safety and security of residents and visitors to our village. Our officers are tasked with investigating criminal offenses that occur and apprehend those that are responsible for by using the best investigative tools and techniques available. Um, this obviously changes as technology changes, hence the flock, uh, safety cameras. Um, our unique location geographically here has us, uh, intersecting a major interstate I eighty-eight and several state routes, uh, Illinois Route thirty-one, which runs north-south, Illinois Route twenty-five, which one, which runs north-south and Illinois Route fifty-six, which runs east-west and, uh, ends up with a I eighty-eight. It makes North Aurora an attractive target to criminals who seek an easy way in and out of town, and it hinders our investigations and quick apprehension of those offenders. The traditional investigative techniques that we use require time, which allows the criminals to not only dispose of their proceeds or the evidence which would aid in their apprehension and conviction. Case in point, in the last year, we've seen an increase in ruse burglary crimes. For those not familiar with ruse burglary crimes, these are crimes that typically target our elderly residents. They're burglaries where the offenders pretend to be, uh, either village employees or maintenance workers. And they will, will lure the victim out of the house in order to gain access into the house and then take valuables. We've had two confirmed in the last year and we actually were able to stop one in progress by good patrol work. The groups that commit these crimes are complex. They're organized and they always operate outside of our village and sometimes even outside of our state. They utilize transportation that, uh, utilizes the networks that I mentioned before with the interstate and state road systems. They change their vehicles frequently, which makes them difficult to track and makes it harder on our investigators to make cases and arrests. These offenders are known to law enforcement as most offenders are. Uh, they're wise to our investigative methods, which means they typically do not com, they do not cooperate with us when they're apprehended. And, uh, sometimes that means that the only way of, uh, securing charges and convictions is the physical evidence that were provided by cameras. Photographic evidence helps to prove these criminals' movements and places them in areas where they commit their crimes, which helps us then seek convictions. Um, going into what Flock Safety is and how long they've been kind of on the scene, they were founded in, uh, twenty seventeen. Their founder came up with the idea for criminal activity that was in his own neighborhood. He kind of developed these cameras in conjunction with the police department and Dan Murdock, who's here from Flock, will talk shortly. He's going to tell, give us a presentation on the founding of their company. Uh, the cameras use automated license plate reading. They are not red light cameras. Uh, they utilize short shutter speed to capture multiple pictures of the vehicles that pass through the motion sensor of the cameras. They use infrared technology to capture clear and accurate images during the day and night, which is, which aids us in our investigations. They have machine learning technology that allows vehicle information to be captured beyond the license plate, which is helpful to us, such as the vehicle color, the vehicle make, the vehicle type, and any unusual characteristics such as stickers or imperfections that might help in identifying that vehicle later on. Flock Safety ensures that the information that they capture is secured at the highest level, which is important to us. Uh, there is no personal identifiable information such D, such as DMV records that are stored within Flock. And the Flock Safety Camera itself only captures the rear of the vehicle. It does not capture the faces of any of the occupants in the vehicle, and it does not capture any foot traffic or images of people. Uh, their footage is deleted from their cloud-based storage after thirty days on a rolling basis. Our own policy that exists prohibits our officers and any agents acting on behalf of the department from disseminating confidential information or protected information. The cost to purchase these four cameras and two port, we would do four fixed cameras and two portable cameras, which Dan is going to explain here in a little bit, is nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, there would be an annual reoccurring fee that, uh, we would pay each year of eighteen thousand five hundred. And there is an anticipated increase coming to these costs, uh, on or around June first, twenty twenty-three. I believe it's either June or July and Dan will go into that. Um, if we do agree to go ahead with, uh, this proposal and we sign a contract with Flock, they will go ahead and lock those current prices in and they'll defer payment till after our June first budget year, which is advantageous to the village. Uh, they currently operate cameras in two thousand law enforcement agencies and they're growing. We maintain a reciprocal agreement currently with Flock, so we do currently use, we have access to their existing network, which our officers can log into and check license plates, uh, on the communities that allow, allow us to, uh, access to our cameras. It's kind of a sharing agreement. They have to give us the ability to look into them. Some of the local law enforcement agencies that either have cameras in place or are under contract to implement Flock Safety Cameras right here in Kane County are the Kane County Sheriff's Office, the South Elgin Police Department and the St. Charles Police Department. Kane County, in fact, already has operational cameras in use on Orchard Road. Flock Safety is currently working with other Fox Valley communities in Kane County, uh, with potential contracts. And we do have other communities such as Aurora to our south that has their own network of cameras. Those consist of an internal camera system that they use in addition to red light cameras. We believe that the addition of the Flock Safety Cameras will aid our investigators in the identification, apprehension of criminal offenders in a timely manner, and they'll protect our community and our citizens in the process. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan and he's going to give us a short presentation on Flock and we'll have to take any questions afterwards.
Uh, first of all, really appreciate you guys taking some time at your meeting to learn a little bit more about Flock. Um, Deputy Chief, I actually hit on a lot of things I'm gonna, I was going to be talking about, uh, very, uh, very effective job. I go to a lot of city council meetings. You teed me up very well. Fairly speaking, so great job there. But as you mentioned, Flock Safety, we've been around for about six years now. And we came into being because our owner and CEO, again, Garrett, uh, he was at his own homeowners association in a neighborhood outside of Atlanta. And there are issues. People come to the neighborhood, check for unlocked cars and steal some out of cars, which is pretty, pretty common crime. Sure, it happens here. And they reached out to the local PD, detective came out, asked if anyone seen anything, they even got a ring doorbell or can anyone tell me anything? And no one saw anything. No one had any video give them. Uh, so unfortunately that crime went unsolved. But he did tell if he had a license plate, that had been really helpful to his investigation. So, uh, that HOA went online to go look up LPR and found out it had been about twenty-seven thousand dollars to buy a brand-new camera, get it installed, front the power, the ethernet, the whole nine yards. Like, this is crazy. Uh, and Garrett, Garrett, he had to be an electrical engineer by trade. So, and he built a license plate rear in his garage. Put the front of their subdivision, it's like one of those one-way-in, one-out type deals. The exact same crime happened a couple of weeks later. He's able to filter out all the local residents and came back with two rogue plates, which he gave the local PD, did a quick investigation. They ended up recording stolen vehicles and, or some, uh, some stolen items and, uh, light bulb went off his head. Um, now, the big difference between Garrett, uh, created and basically any other LPR on, on the market at the time was they were all using infrared light. Um, so the way that LPR basically worked since the eighties was that you would either hang a camera on the side of the road or strap it to a squad car and it would stream infrared light all day long. And whenever a metal license plate would pass through the camera's eye, it would reflect that back and make a read on the plate number based on the raised numbers. So that's basically how they worked for twenty-five years. Garrett didn't really have a background in LPR or law enforcement in general, and he basically built a very high-powered trail cam. So the way these guys work is their motion capture. So they basically hang it at the side of the road and anytime something moves in front of it, it takes a bunch of pictures. They wrote machine learning over the top of it for to be able to identify what was a vehicle, uh, read the plate, color and make a vehicle. Um, so basically overnight, we took this technology from being something where you either had to know exactly what vehicle you're looking for, had to be on some sort of list or something. To now, a witness can say, uh, after a ruse burglary happened, they got into a, a black F one fifty. Uh, then your law enforcement will go back to the cameras, search all the black Ford trucks and work backwards to the license plate. So that's really the big jump forward here in technology we're talking about. Um, the second piece is that these cameras are integrated, um, with the FBI's database for stolen vehicles, as well as the Illinois, uh, it's called the leads list for, uh, their stolen vehicles, people warrants, things like that. Amber alerts, silver alerts, which is, uh, missing, uh, uh, older people, uh, and a custom hot list they create. So if a stolen vehicle enters North Aurora, Aurora and, and, uh, past the camera, they'll send off a real-time alert to your law enforcement that a stolen vehicle just got off Orchard Road and, uh, is heading into town. So they can respond in real time, either make a stop on that vehicle or drive that vehicle out of town before, uh, or it commits any sort of crime. Um, I guess, uh, real quick, uh, does anyone have any questions or anything? I just kind of, uh, ran through there and I gave, throw a lot of information to you really quickly.
Besides law enforcement, do you also work with like still private homeowners associations quite a bit?
Absolutely. So, um, uh, Flock, like I said, we started by selling to HOAs and businesses. It's actually still fifty-five percent of our business. More than half of all the cameras Flock sells actually isn't to law enforcement. It's directly to the public. And any pu, uh, camera that goes into the public in your guys jurisdiction, uh, they can share with the law enforcement agency for free. So like some of our biggest customers in the company, country are things like Lowe's and Walmart and things like that. Um, I, what's the mall, um?
The auto mall.
Uh, no, uh, the, uh, uh, York, Yorkshire Mall over Lombard, like they've, uh, yeah, York, I'm sorry. They've got a bunch of cameras, so they will, they share and integrate with the law enforcement. Uh, law enforcement cameras don't go the other way to, to the public. It's just, it can flow into law enforcement. Then your team gets access to them at no additional charge.
So you're looking to put them on eighty-eight over there and twenty-five in some busy areas? Is that the idea?
We've targeted a couple, uh, areas, eighty-eight and thirty-one would be one of the priorities and potentially on fifty-six, more likely near the twenty-five corridor there.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. You know, we've been discussing this internally, I would say for what, two to three years, about two years. We really clinched it for us. We had a call at the auto mall. Stolen vehicle also taken with a briefcase full of money and a firearm. We were able to sign into the Flock system and track the vehicle on eighty-eight, um, getting off at different exits, and we actually caught the offender coming out of a Walmart in Homewood. Um, and recovered the stolen property along with the vehicle. Also, for the past hour and a half before the meeting, we were tracking a missing person. Um, we didn't have Flock camera coming off at eighty, thirty-one, where we thought she might have gotten off. We're using not real-time Find My iPhone. Um, really, we didn't get live updates until OnStar gave us permission to use the tracking and now she's ended up further north. But if in the time of, is of the essence crimes, this is when these really come into play.
I, I have a real concern about privacy issues with these. I, I get it with an HOA. You're voting on the HOA, you're voting on who's the president. The HOA is making the decisions based on the privacy of that neighborhood. But this device basically tracks the vehicle, not who's inside the vehicle. So to say that this is going to help, help catch a criminal, you just caught a car that may or may not have the criminal in it. So I have real concerns with where this technology could go, what can be done with it. Um, especially when you hear about the shared agreements with other communities. I, I, I don't know if I'd be comfortable with if somebody in Geneva wants to know where I am or St. Charles wants to know where I am, looking through through data. I, I, I'm not saying there's not a time and place for this, but I have real concerns with not now. It's too new. And the other thing is I, my concern is for the neighborhoods that have these cameras. Because there's a stigma attached to neighborhoods that have security cameras and safety cameras to them. Who wants to live in a blue light district or, uh, or a safety camera district? So that's, that's one of my main issues as well.
I agree with you. Uh, we, I think that's why we hem and hawed for over a couple of years, um, to really vet the system because it's, it's not new anymore. We're surrounded by cameras. Everywhere you go, like Woodman, Woodman's and Target, they have the best surveillance systems around. And we're not tracking everyday citizens. We're getting the crime and then we're kind of backtracking. We're getting the plate, the type of vehicle, and we're trying to see which vehicle and what plate is actually leaving from that side of the crime, backtrack that to where we can then locate them.
But isn't it discriminating to say, okay, well, we're going to put them only in these certain areas? Because now people who know where those cameras are, they're going to think, okay, that neighborhood's a high crime area.
Yeah, they're not going in neighborhoods. They're going in major intersections like I eighty-eight and thirty-one. We're basically our, our, our arterial routes where they're getting off, um, Orchard and Orchard Gateway. Butterfield Route twenty-five, Route fifty-six, where they're going from Elgin to Aurora down Butterfield to go to the western suburbs. We're trying to identify the best areas where they would be passing through town, also working in conjunction with the cameras that are already out there.
I, I just think it's a major invasion of privacy. I don't think we need it. Everybody's got to ring all the main, um, big box stores have their own private security. I know the auto mall has a ton of security. I just don't want this to stigmatize our village.
So if I can just jump in there real quick, trustee Curtis, um, one of the nice things about Flock is very similar to a lot of the other systems we use and we've already have the access to their systems. In order for my officers or any officer or any agent of North Aurora to access the information, they have to, one, log in, but then they have to provide the case number to Flock that they're working on. It's just not they, they can't just go in there and run a random plate and start looking for plates.
And it works great while it works great until it doesn't work great. Until now you can, you know, I do have serious concerns about our right to privacy.
Sure, and that's one thing with the ring.
Invasion of it. And I think we shouldn't be so quick to jump, to jump on this. Again, this is identifying the vehicle, not who's driving it. You, you even said it doesn't do facial recognition. So how, what's to stop somebody from stealing my car? And now I've got a SWAT team at my house because my car, but not I was caught at the scene of something.
So I can give you an example. I work on the Major Crimes Task Force as well, and, uh, I work on the OID team. And one of the cases that we worked recently was a homicide up in West Dundee. Uh, West Dundee does have red light cameras. Unfortunately, they were unable to access them right away. When we were able to get that information, we immediately plugged it into the Flock system. And within a matter of minutes, we had a hit on the vehicle down in the south suburbs. Now, unfortunately for us, they had a large head start on us. And that vehicle ended up on fire and burned in the community. We, as soon as we accessed it and found out where it was at, we got a call from the neighboring jurisdiction that had the vehicle and said, we have your vehicle. Uh, unfortunately, it's on fire. Um, so we did, if we would have gotten that information quicker, we would have been able to track those suspects. We knew the vehicle. We knew what we were looking for. Uh, we were able to use West Dundee's red light cameras to go back and get a license plate, plug it into the, to the Flock camera system and then track that vehicle to where we ended up finding it. Had we have had that sooner, we may have made an apprehension and a homicide where now those investigators have to do additional work and can potentially lose the evidence that they need to make a conviction or a strong, solid conviction. Um, the other cases that these work in are missing person cases like the chief just spoke about, uh, kidnapping cases. Uh, burglaries, I did the numbers for North Aurora. Um, one of our biggest things that we have is the, uh, burglaries, the motor vehicle. A lot of these crews aren't local anymore. It used to be where we saw a problem with, uh, local youth sometimes where it became a game. It was called car hopping. Now we're seeing organized groups come out of the city of Chicago and some of the bigger municipalities. And they're coming into our areas and stealing catalytic converters. They're breaking into cars and most times these groups are armed when they're doing it. So they pose a real challenge to not only law enforcement, but the safety of our community, community at whole. The quicker we can get them off the road as law enforcement is better for us. And I do understand the privacy concerns. Believe me, I do. We wouldn't have even looked into this if we thought there was an issue, but this is going after the criminals. It's not going after the, the citizens that we have. There's no reason for us to be looking at any license plates other than our officers already do with leads and the other.
Can if you wanted to, and that's, that's what gets me.
And we have places and that we have.
Not identify, it's identifying vehicles, not people.
Can I just say something? For, I, 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 I like this program because it's not looking into the car. It's identifying a vehicle and the features of a vehicle from behind. And I will say, I share your concerns with privacy generally, but there's no expectation of a right to privacy when you're out in public. There, there's no expectation of the right to privacy when you're out in public. And, and there's when you're coming in, in, in a car and all they're doing is tracking down the vehicle, all they're doing is creating data. It's not like there's somebody behind a computer looking at all these photographs and they're creating data. They're, they're tracking data. And then when, when a crime is committed, they go back to that. They're tracking data and then when, when a crime is committed, they go back to that data and they review the data to see if it verifies based on the description of the crime. And they're not invading anybody's right to privacy. They're not invading inside the vehicle. They're not inviting invading inside the home. They're not tracking anybody's faces. They're tracking the features of a vehicle that may or may not have committed a crime. And I do agree with the chief and deputy chief. We run a very lean police department and we have very high expectations for our police officers when crimes are committed. There are people that will complain about burglaries, about shootings, about drugs, and we expect that to be resolved immediately. So I think as a board, we should be giving our police officers every possible tool at in the arsenal to fight crime and get criminals off the street as quickly as possible. Imagine the poor woman who got shot in the Wendy's parking lot. If they'd been able to get that criminal immediately after the shooting took place, he wouldn't have begun up to Huntley or wherever he was or in committing other crimes. And I think it took a couple of months to get that guy off the street, right? And who, who knows what he did in the interim? So I, I, I share your concerns with privacy when it, when Alexa's listening to our conversations in our home and our cell phones and whatnot. This is, I think this is much, much different than that.
What you say about the whole concept of it may or may not stigmatize certain neighborhoods, certain areas of the village.
I think we're talking about six cameras in a village of 20,000 or four cameras in a village of 20,000 people where Aurora has their own cameras. There's cameras all already all up and down Kane County. I don't think there's any stigma. I think the stigma is that we're, we're here to protect our citizens and we're going to do everything at our disposal to protect our citizens because we are in a high traffic area.
Why no cameras on Randall? Why no cameras on Orchard? Why Butterfield, 88, 31? I mean, these are all the older parts of town here and I, you know, I live on the east side. I don't want there to be a stigmatism of certain areas because there must be crime if there are cameras there.
I actually think it cuts the other way. I think it cuts to the, to the point that this village is known as a safe place to live, right? I view it as such. And I think, I think it cuts the other way. I think this is a village who takes their, the safety of their citizens seriously. And this is just one more layer that we're going to make sure that we're doing that. And they're being put at those particular spots Laura, because they're going, those are the arteries that lead the quickest in and out of the village.
And you know that the majority of security cameras are on one side of town and there's none on the other side of town. What is your perception?
My perception is, is if someone explains to me that those, that the, the main arteries in and out of the villages happen to be on the inside of the town.
And they're not on Orchard.
Right. Because those are not the main arteries that people are using to come in and out of the village. So explain that to me, then I accept that.
Exit on Orchard Road.
Trustee Curtis, we're trying to identify the, from our investigations, we're looking, where do people flee the village? It's 88 and 31 Orchard and Orchard Gateway. There's already cameras at Orchard and I-88. And then we hemmed and hawed, do we do Orchard, Orchard Gateway or Orchard and Randall? We have more people that jump on when they commit crimes at Woodman's, North Aurora Auto Mall, they jump on 88. 56 and 25 simply because they, the high traffic area between Elgin and Aurora, we're in between. That also captures a lot of our crimes and where they flee to. So if we had a lot more cameras, that would be fantastic. We would put them in other areas. We're just trying to identify the cost effective way and were we really struggle with identifying where they're fleeing to?
These aren't red light cameras, right?
No.
So we're not out there to get the guy who he's going to go to court because he was, he said it was a yellow and there's a red, like Cicero or something like that.
This is not a traffic related camera.
So this is just to catch criminals in some high traffic areas and we'll have the data and.
Consider it like an iPass where you're tracking the license plate.
Does he have more to finish up? Maybe I'll clear up any questions or things as we go ahead and we'll let him finish them, then we'll kick it around again.
Yeah. So on, on the privacy front, Flock has worked with civil liberty groups to try, try and address some of these concerns. One is that every capture is stored on CIGS certified Amazon web server, which is their highest, there's the highest level of of security. And after 30 days, if it has not been marked as part of an active investigation, it is purged and is gone, gone. So this is not a forever database where we're going to be able to go back like six months and see how anyone, any vehicle moved around throughout, throughout the area. After 30 days, it is gone. Two, you are actually not buying cameras from Flock. You are buying the data coming out of the cameras. So the village of North Aurora owns the data, not Flock Safety. So there is no reselling this to third parties or insurance companies or anything like that. You own the data and you guys decide who, what other law enforcement agencies that they can share the data with. And third, as, as you mentioned earlier, we are not connecting the same PPI data. We are not saying that is Mark Jackson driving that vehicle. We are saying that's a black Ford truck with plate XR437. And as far as where Flock is around the state, we are in 190 cities and villages around the state with many of them in both high, high end neighborhood, high end cities like on the North Shore and some more places that have some economic hardships. We have very, very high penetration all throughout DePage County, Will County, Cook County. So this definitely crosses the social economic spectrum of where these cameras are without question. But wouldn't mind popping the next slide real quick. So when, when a stolen vehicle goes, goes through here, this is what your law enforcement agencies will see. They get a picture of the plate, picture of the vehicle, location, direction of travel and why it pinged off the hot list. They're going to near real time, there'll be a respond, you're going to make a stop on that vehicle or drive that vehicle out of town. That second picture is, is pretty good representation of what, of what the capture looks like. So again, we are not capturing fronts vehicles, not capturing faces, anything like that. There's no facial recognition involved in this whatsoever. You mind popping the next one? As far as what these cameras look like, these are the three core deployments here. Most common is on an existing pole that you guys own. We'll hang the camera, hang the solar panel. Or if we're hardwiring it right into the, right into the pole, or we can drop our own DOT approved 12 foot breakaway poles in the ground. Flock also owns all the permitting involved for this. So if the city requires permits, we'll go to the city. We do the IDOT permitting and we also do Kane County permitting. So Flock's actually a fully vertically integrated organization. So there are no third parties during this whole process. So we designed the hardware and the software ourselves outside of Atlanta. We assemble this camera ourselves in Madison, Wisconsin. I'm the sales rep. I live in Brookfield and I'm coming around the state trying to sell them on cameras. The techs who install the cameras do ongoing maintenance. Those are also Flock employees. They roll out of Bowling Brook. So we come out here, we will dig the hole, put the pole up, hang the camera. There's ever an issue with the camera, we roll a tech. They, they come and try and fix the camera. They can't fix the camera. We hang a brand new camera, no cost to the village. So again, you're not buying the camera, you're buying the data and it's Flock's responsibility to have working cameras in your jurisdiction. After the next one. So as the deputy chief mentioned, Flock does have a price increase coming actually April 1st. But any who signs, signs contract before April 1st will get the, the legacy pricing. It's 2,500 dollars per camera per year, plus a, plus the install fee depending on what the permitting is. We will basically hold, hold that contract in place and basically execute the installation of the cameras once your guys' budget cycle rolls around.
I'm good.
Ted? There's, it says here, there's four fixed cameras and two portable. What's the difference?
So the fixed cameras are attached to poles and either hardwired in or are using solar power. And they basically are right there at the side, side of the road. The portable cameras get charged, can be charged to a wall outlet. At full charge, they hold about 30,000 captures and they can basically come with quick deploy clamps. And so you're having an issue at Auto Mall or you're having a a neighborhood that has seen a lot of action recently and, and law enforcement feels like something's happening there. Or you have like a parade or event or something. They can just go throw the camera up. It'll last about 30,000 unique captures or five or six days. Once it kind of dies out, they can come pick up the camera or whenever they're done, go back and recharge it.
So for you guys, is there a reason you want the two portable? Do you have versus fixed?
For example, we had a lot of issues at the roadway in. We had a lot of high crime, dangerous crime going on. A portable fixed camera would, would have been great, but now that it's been cleaned up, there's really no need for it anymore or even on a speed trailer. Lot of issues. Or if we're having like at the bus barn, they had a bunch of catalytic converters. They're getting hit all the time. That's another way you can place them, but there's no reason to have a permanent fixed location for it. So it's basically identifying it as a crimes occur, like at the Auto Mall, like on the actual Hanson Boulevard.
Okay, cool. I like it. Does it help? No, I was gonna say I'm, I, I don't see any problem with this. I like it.
Does it help to have them movable so that, I mean, I assume the criminals kind of pick up on where the locations of the cameras are? I mean.
A big part of it is what IDOT in the county will allow on the roadways. IDOT is not the easiest entity to work with. So there's a very specific permitting process, the type of pole it has to go on. Like it's very regiment if you want to do anything on an IDOT roadway. So that's a big part of it. The other part is that, I mean, it just is like if you had all, you'd just be doing a lot of activity of putting the camera up, taking it down, come back and charging it if you were trying to use our all portable.
No, I meant more like, I assume the criminals kind of pick up and they would avoid those routes.
I mean, they, these aren't the most like, they don't really necessarily look like cameras. I, I mean, maybe some of the really advanced crews are like really focused on this, but there's, there's about 2,000 of these cameras in the Chicagoland area. And like you would have to be very, very diligent to be a crew to know like how, how to get in and out and not take an exit and like really do that to get around the whole county.
I would think when they're in a hurry trying to get away from something, they're not thinking about cameras. They just want to get out of town.
They're also thinking that I'm using a stolen car. There's nothing to track the plate back to me actually. We don't care. We're not trying to track them. We're trying to track where that car is going and being parked. Then we can identify who's getting out of the vehicle and backtrack it that way.
Not to mention the fact that, I mean, Steph was, we've had several conversations. We're very cognizant of the privacy issue and talked about that. And there are a lot of municipalities looking at this and having the same conversation with their boards right now. And relating into that, there are a lot of municipalities in this area that already have them or are looking at them. Meaning even if they, they took a different route out of town, they may get picked up in the next town because they have cameras on a different street.
Yep. Mark, you're okay then?
Yeah. And will these integrate with Aurora's internal system?
No, no, they won't. Aurora maintains their own intelligent command center and they have different types of cameras that are both red light cameras as well as not stop motion, but continuous recording. So it won't work with them, but it will work with the other Flock system throughout and then any other agencies that, that pull in. I did want to address too, what Administrator Bosco was saying with the unauthorized access in addition to Flock's protocols that they put into place. I've included our own policy in your packets. This basically covers all our employees if they are to disseminate any information that they shouldn't based on, you know, the, the agreements we have with the various vendors and leads and everything else.
Laura? Any more comment?
I do not think it's a good idea. I don't think it's the time right now. If we do proceed, I'd like to see notice given to residences and businesses that are going to be close to it, just because I do see a direct correlation in stigmatism and decline in property values to neighborhoods that have these physical cameras.
Mike, I don't have a problem with it at all. I think it's a very good idea. I think it's prudent and it's wise and hopefully it'll keep crime down. So I'm all for it.
Carolyn?
I'm 100% for it. I think that chief, you mentioned that St. Charles is one of the communities that has it. I don't think that St. Charles has suffered any stigmatism because of it. And I think that in my opinion, it cuts the other way. It makes it look like our community is safer because we're going this extra step. So I'm 100%, 100% for it.
So I'm in agreement too, you know? Living in town my whole life, you know, one of the things we always hung our hat on was North Aurora was safe, you know? If you don't have your safety, you can have the sharpest lawn or the fanciest house or whatever you like, but you know, and I think grandma drives off, you know, you're going to be like, man, I'll tell you what, that was the greatest thing because we were able to track her car. Or if there's a child abduction, if it's you, you'll, it would be worth a million dollars to you, you know? And I think as a resident, I don't think the stigma would be bad. I think it'd be the other way around that. You know, we are proactive and I, and I trust the two chiefs, you know, the information they're giving us. Administrator Bosco too, I mean, this isn't just something that I think they thought, oh, this would be great. We should have some cameras. I mean, I think, you know, I value what you guys say and you know, our department is so small that this is one more tool. You know, we expect a lot of our police. I mean, you know, residents, as trustee Carol said, I mean, people are like, they're always have comments, you know, about this and that in town and what's going on and guys at Woodman's or this, that, and this would just definitely add to that. I don't think you really should send notice out to people. I don't think they really need to know there's cameras in these areas because I think that would kind of be a negative, you know, so. I like the idea. I think it's proactive and I think it's kind of a lead in the area besides St. Charles. I mean, I think other towns will probably fall in line, but I value your opinion on how it works for you and, and if it, if it helps one person in town with like is mentioned before, be way worth it. So any other comments?
No, I was gonna, the only thing I was gonna say is other than just the camera, there's not signage out there that says safety cameras ahead or like in Chicago, they got the blue lights. I mean, it's, it's just a black box out there. I don't think it's going to be even noticeable.
I did notice one on Orchard about a month ago and I thought I was kind of, I'm wondering what that is and never thought about it again, but I did see it over there in front of Dunkin Donuts sitting on the best side of the road.
I, I don't know, maybe I'm, I kind of like the idea of putting it right on our village sign. We're a camera protected community. Criminals beware. I mean, why not? I mean, then maybe they avoid our, our town instead of trying to victimize our residents. Throw it out there, throw the gauntlet and say, you know what? Have at it, but we're going to catch you.
Especially the ones that are like praying on like elderly people that, that's like, doesn't get much lower than that. So I guess move ahead with the process. Anything else? Steve or Matt?
No, that's it. Thank you.
No exact session, so motion adjourned.
So second.
Say hi.
Hi.
Good night, everybody.